Twenty, uh, we'll start off with Joe Gallo, the Township Manager, and we'll go around, Robin. Joe, go ahead.
Yeah, that's fine. Um, I don't believe Ryan is, is, is here today. I know he has had a meeting, uh, at the county, so I'll go through some issues that Ryan wanted to bring forward. Um, he wanted to, uh, give special thanks to the, now I may be butchering the, the name on here, the Chinmaya Fish and Bridgetown Pike. Uh, they gave a thousand dollar donation for the food bank, so we want to say thank you to them. Five hundred dollars would go to Saint Stevens, and five hundred dollars would also go to Assumption Church with that donation. Uh, so far, right now, um, Ryan's group in the Fire Marshal's Office has given four full bins, uh, the toders, the Saint Stevens Food Bank, uh, the next four-
Joe, excuse me, my audio is terrible. Has anybody else experienced it? I can't hear a word you're saying.
I hear, I hear you, Matt, but I- Can you hear?
I hear loud and clear. I can hear you fine.
I'm getting a lot of-
Yeah, I don't know, Matt, it might be on yours.
And I'm muted.
I don't know. Um, as of, as of the, the four full bins went to Saint Stevens, so the next four would go to Assumption Church. Um, he basically stated as of 5/11, there was fifteen calls that they handled. One was a COO alarm, was, one was a water flow sprinkler alarm. Uh, there was a small fuel spill on Street and Buzzleton, and with the help of, uh, Public Works, they took care of that, uh, that fuel spill with a certain product. Uh, there was a shed fire, two EMS calls, so that seems to be normal, two building fires, uh, one brush fire, which was a power line related issue, two dwelling fires, two alarm systems, and the one nursing home fire was an assist that they did with Warminster Township. And then the other was a, a small dumpster fire, I believe in Arbor Lake. So, he's saying the fire inspections are moving along, no, so far no issues, so, uh, he is providing that, that service out of the Fire Marshal's Office. All right, and then as far as, um, uh, I, I'm basically going to go around, Robin. I'll let, uh, Mark talk about his Public Works issues, and then also we could get back to Matt, and then Matt could, uh, discuss his particular items. Mark, you want to talk? Mark?
Mark McDonald?
Mark?
If you are muted, please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, sorry about that.
No problem.
Dietrich, Dietrich Construction started in the police parking lot today. They ripped up, uh, approximately ninety-five feet of sidewalk, one of the driveway apens, and they excavated a, uh, pretty decent sized area in the parking lot. Matter of fact, the underground water is filling up that area as we speak, so you might have a new dolphin swim club by the morning. But anyway, we'll, we'll have that, uh, we'll have that all piped into the back of the inlet, hopefully within, within a couple of days. Uh, he should be done by the end of this week. He should be done. We'll just have to, uh, blacktop the parking lot. And they're, they're doing pretty well there. Uh, Rose and I are doing pretty well, uh, in Natalie's absence, working at, uh, Natalie's absence, rather, working out, uh, doing the invoices and all the office work. Public Works guys are working pretty well. Uh, everybody stepping up and doing what they have to. We're, we're keeping up with the grass. We started some, uh, storm sewer jobs today. They've been on the list for quite a while. So I have six or seven of them. So I'm doing the PA one calls and getting them all lined up. We'll knock them out as best we can, but we're doing okay.
Mark, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, the, the paving list that we received, uh, this afternoon, is that the final, final tally? And when, when would you expect that to begin, just at a ballpark?
Uh, yes, that, that is the final tally. The estimates should come in hopefully below what, what we have. I would, I, I would hope we could be getting that done in July.
Okay.
And, and Mark, I'd like to ask you, that, that, the streets that were listed, who was the final decision making in that?
Well, the streets- Yeah, well, it's a combi-, it's a combination on the streets. I mean, it was a, a lot of historical stuff that Frank left us, and the streets that Mark, uh, took it upon himself to, uh, drive the vast majority of all the streets in the township, and using his independent eye, formulating a plan. Um, due to the fact that we could not ride together, we still wanted to get this program up and running, so we formulated a list of problematic streets as best as we can, and we gave them the Ja-, John Genovese. John Genovese put it on the Penn Live bid, so that's the, the next thing that we have to do is that we'll get some, hopefully some good bids in, and, uh, hopefully save the township some money, but also take some pro-, take care of some problematic roads and streets.
Well, there was-
Yeah, I took some, uh, I, I had, I had a list of, uh, a lot of suggestions from a lot of you folks over the last couple of years that I, that I took with me.
I had a suggestion last time at the, at the paving tour. I had a suggestion for it, so I need to see it on the list this year, so maybe I can call you on that.
Okay, no problem.
I think, wasn't there a list that was emailed back in March or April?
There was, there was, Ray.
Yeah, yeah.
So was there, I mean, without comparing it, was the list much different than what was-
It seems pretty much in line with what we got back in, uh, a month or two ago. Uh, not exactly, but pretty close.
Hey, Mark, I have a question for you. Um, I know all the way down Forest Avenue, which is one of the roads that we're going to be paving, uh, if memory serves me correct, wasn't there some, uh, some underground piping work that needed to be done? And, and, uh, I believe that's one reason why we had put that horrible section off for quite some time, and was all that taken care of?
Well, I'll, I'll answer that one, Mark. On, on that one, what we did is, uh, last time, we've actually got some, I believe, some quotes through John Genovese and Tri-State, and the numbers that we were getting were extraordinarily high to do all that piping. What we wanted to do in talking with John is to, one, because we, we're getting a super amount of complaints on that particular road, we're going to try to mill it as best as we can, and, and try to direct whatever water as best as we can in that particular circumstance. So we're going to try it, and right now, I believe, I've been here seven years, that thing's probably been out there for probably more than I've been here. Um, so, people are getting tired of just seeing patched roads, so we wanted to act on it. We're going to try to mill it correctly with the, you know, with the help of having a Public Works Director now, and hopefully we can take care of the water issue, but also, uh, not have to do the, uh, uh, spend a, a million plus dollars for that particular general location.
Okay, so-
So we're going to try, we're going to try to do the best we can, Kim. I can't say it's going to work a hundred percent, but, uh, we're going to try to certainly work it where it's, uh, it, it's sort of feasible, and, and we had to get the road done anyway, because we're, we, I can't tell you how many complaints we got on that, on that given road.
Yeah. It's horrible, it, it's horrible. But I mean, are we going to wind up paving this, and then, you know, six months from now, having to tear it back up to, uh, to do piping work? I mean-
No, well, we're going to try to direct the flow as best we can there. Um, you know, there's nothing that's saying that, you know, maybe two years from now, we may have to revisit it, but with the cost of just doing that street, it, it's kind of, uh, kind of a no-brainer. We're going to take a shot at it, see if it works. If it doesn't work, then we got to do the piping, then we're going to have to outweigh a lot of money in that, in that general area.
I know, I sent pictures of that area, uh, a while ago, about what a mess it is. But, uh, Mark, if I could ask you, um, the street that I'm referring to with Old Street Road, that is a very high-travelled road, it's a cut road, and that road is a mess, and it's been a mess. And I know you, you did do some po-, uh, potholes there, and it doesn't last. And that was a mess even before that new complex was built. And when that complex was being built, a lot of the messes there was due to that complex being built. So that street, and, and the tour from last year, um, I had, I had asked, and we did a tour then, I don't know if you even drove down that street.
I'm, I'm pretty sure Mark did, but they, what we'll do is we'll see what the prices come in at on this particular bid. They may be lower with gasoline being much lower, who knows right now. Uh, but it may be also where you have everybody putting their bids out at the same time, and then it may drum up the price. Uh, we're just going to see how it goes. This is a, a challenge year, and we're going to do the best we can with the road paving program.
Now, I understand that, but I just don't know if that street was looked at. That's my question. It's been a mess for a very long time, so I'm just asking that. If it's just as bad as some of the other roads that are out there, if not worse, that we're paving. It's just a, a bequest.
Okay. Mark, did you have anything else? I guess not. So, um, Matt, did you want to go? Matt?
Unmute, please. Unmute. As you speak, unmute, please.
Okay, can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, good evening. Uh, currently, the, uh, status is that we are in the red phase, um, which is affecting the parks, obviously. Uh, with the better weather, everybody wants to get out there. Uh, currently, we only have the walking trails at Playwicky Farm and Russell Elliott Memorial Park open. There's talk of potentially opening playgrounds, um, and providing signage. And at this time, it, it seems to be a move that, uh, Bucks County is going in that direction. I've shared signage with other parks and recreation professionals to make sure that we've kind of covered all our bases. Uh, I could get signage produced, uh, pretty quickly, and I'd also, um, make the recommendation to open the playgrounds solely based on the fact that they're being used.
Now, what are the CDC guidelines? Do you know what the CDC guidelines are for the playgrounds?
Very aware of the guidelines. Uh, guidelines state that the playgrounds wouldn't open until green.
Oh, okay. Well, we're going to be in yellow on June 5th, as you said, so-
Is, is the county saying otherwise, though, Matt?
The, the county is supporting the move to open the playgrounds, and I've always considered the skate park as an amenity, uh, to the park system, just like a playground. I inspect it monthly. Uh, any kind of maintenance that needs to be performed on those is performed daily. Um, uh, it, it would be to the board's discretion if they want to include the skate park as a playground. Um, the playground at Russell Elliott and the playground at Playwicky Farm, we could open up pretty readily.
Does that include opening the restrooms?
At this time, it would not.
Okay.
So if we opened the, like, so, to get back to my question, if we opened the playground, there are CDC guidelines for that, that we would have to follow if you opened that, obviously?
Well, the, ju- just to put things in order, Deb, and be clear, the, the CDC guidelines are a, a federal mandate, and then the Bucks County Department of Health typically adopts those. Uh, it seems that somewhere in that chain that, uh, Bucks County Emergency Management felt playgrounds should reopen, and they preemptively sent out a message with no guidelines. So as a parks and recreation professional, it's hard to interpret a very short, two-sentence email from an emergency management coordinator, uh, at the county level, but we would put in place signage.
So, so I'm aware that CDC is a federal agency, so you're telling me that the county is not following the CDC federal agency, they're doing their own thing, and all they're going to have is signage, and that's what you're suggesting we do?
I, I can't speak to that, Deb.
Okay.
Hey, Matt, I have a question for you.
Shoot.
With either the, uh, the yellow phase or the green phase, once these parks open back up, the playgrounds, are we going to be responsible for any type of sanitation process, uh, like requirements?
What I'm seeing now i- is in the way of signage. It's more of a use at your own risk. Uh, the park and the, that amenity of the park is not sanitized, uh, on a regular basis, uh, or with any schedule or frequency. It would be to the, uh, the parent of the child responsibility to sanitize, wash hands, social distance while using the equipment. Um, it, it's, it's definitely something I, I didn't see coming. Uh, when I received that email yesterday morning, it definitely took me a little by surprise. I figured if anything, they would open up, uh, sport courts, athletic fields. Uh, the last would probably be playgrounds. Um, in, in my opinion, as a parks and recreation professional, they are probably the dirtiest amenity of the park. Uh, even more unsanitary than the restrooms, but the county has made the decision to move forward in opening those amenities, and at this point, I'm just going to kind of leave it to the board's decision.
Would they, the county try to mitigate any type of cleaning of them periodically, weekly, daily?
Now, the, the signage would be consistent to say that it, they are not sanitized-
Okay.
-on any routine or any basis, it, that they are simply, uh, you set your risk.
Okay.
And Matt, you saw that in other town, you saw that in some other townships with the signage, right, that stated that?
Yes, signage is, is simple. Uh, you just have to say, use at your own risk. Um, Frank may weigh in on this one, but I didn't see the, the playgrounds being the first one to reopen. I'll, I'll tell you the truth on that one.
Matt, can I ask you a question?
Shoot.
The, the, the edict that came from the county, okay, was that, because I didn't read it, was that them saying that they're going to open county playgrounds, or was that some type of declaration that they're authorizing all playgrounds in the county, regardless of who oversees them to be open?
It's one and the same. Uh, the county anticipates to have their playgrounds open by the end of the week, which, according to the governor, we would still be in the yellow phase.
And, uh, what about, did it, did it mention about how many people, how many people can be in that area?
We're using a round number of twenty-five, but that doesn't include parents, or do they specify that as equipment users? It's gray.
Because I know that in the yellow zone, twenty-five people is the maximum amount you can have.
Correct.
Does anyone know what the school district is doing as far as their playgrounds, that like, Puffing and Vertabar and, and Talonka? No?
Matt, did you hear from anybody, from any other townships, what their opinions were?
Yeah. I, I've spoke to, uh, numerous other, uh, parks and recreation professionals throughout Bucks County. We all thought that it was a little bit cavalier of the emergency management coordinator to go ahead and authorize something like that, uh, without consulting with any parks and recreation professionals, uh, even at the county level. Uh, but again, that's, that's opinion, and it's hearsay. Uh, it, it's, we're at a point now where I, I don't want to spend another minute talking about playgrounds. You want to open them, or you don't? It's-
Well, this is the first that we're having the discussion about it.
No, I appreciate that, Deb, and I understand.
If you had to do it, Matt, what would you do?
According to the guidelines that I've interpreted, in my professional opinion, the playground should not open until we are in the green phase. If this becomes a windfall of, of other municipalities using their own discretion and providing adequate signage and, uh, doing what is the most forthright by the guidelines, um, open them up. People are using them anyway.
Well, what about the yellow phase, Matt? Might, maybe, maybe meeting him halfway? You know, the yellow phase is supposed to take effect on next Saturday, next Friday.
June 5th, right? June 5th?
Yeah.
Under the current guidelines that, that I'm aware of, Ray, I'm reading them now, the, uh, the playgrounds in the yellow phase would remain closed.
Uh, no, no, I understand that. I mean, but, but us as a board to take that under consideration, instead of just disregarding totally and opening during the red phase, maybe waiting a week and opening during the yellow phase, and that gives us time to get the signs up and posted, and see what the other townships are doing, I don't think, I, I don't know if that would create a problem for the rest of the board or not.
Well, so you're saying, Ray, even though this, the guideline is not to open up the playgrounds till the green zone, even though the, even though the county's saying do it the next way, uh, Matt's saying he doesn't recommend that we should do it doing the yellow zone, because it is the dirt, if, if you could say what you said, I don't want to put words in your mouth, Matt, that you don't, you don't think we should-
Deb, what Matt just said is, I'm a professional. In my professional opinion, you should not open them, but if you want to, go ahead. Isn't that what you just said, Matt?
Uh, in a nutshell, thanks, Frank.
I, I would side with it, with our professional parks and rec person. He, he does it, he knows, and also with the CDC guidelines, I would side with the professional opinion.
I, I'm also going to make you guys aware that there is a significant demographic of individuals who are disregarding this conversation, this meeting, and our instruction, and any signage that's posted in the park. So that's a public perception problem. It, it's not something we can handle through a Microsoft Team meeting. It is a public perception that is viewed differently while-
In, in, actually, in the commissioner's meeting this morning, they actually spoke about this issue, and they did say that the, uh, the emergency management person was a little bit, uh, a little premature with regard to the email. So we would, I think the error on, within reason, is kind of go, at least at a minimum, to at least next Friday a, a status quo right now. Um, and, and, and then cross that barrier, uh, you know, a, a, as we, as we approach that date, but right now, I don't, I don't, I don't, not sure that we should be doing anything on that part right now.
Agreed.
Agreed, I agree.
I'll go with what Matt says.
The other piece of consideration that I would like the board to consider is, um, at, at least in Lower Southampton Township, uh, I have always considered the skate park to be a playground. Uh, I inspect it on a monthly basis. There's, uh, monthly maintenance that goes into that. Uh, it could or could not be considered a playground. Again, I'm not trying to read between the lines, I'm not trying to bend the rules, but do we then open the skate park, or do we keep the skate park then closed? Uh, and then that opens us to the other amenities such as tennis, basketball, baseball, soccer, uh, once we open the dolphin park.
Uh, there was also a group of people playing baseball the other day when I drove by.
At which park?
Up at, uh, Russell Elliott.
Could, could have been like a, a privately organized group, you know?
So I see what you're saying. People not fighting by the rules, and then opening up the playgrounds.
Well, I, well, I, I can't believe this board, I can't believe this board's going to vote to open, you know, what, uh, recreational projects to open on an individual basis. I, we're, we're just not going to do that.
Uh, Matt's, Matt's rendered his opinion, and I respect it.
Thank you.
Hey, Matt? Is this also-
Say again?
Is that also going to be the pool?
We, we can get there. I got a whole list of things I need to discuss with you guys, so it's coming.
All right, thank you.
Just, just, uh, be advised at seven thirty-five.
So, when, um, uh, thank you for, uh, your support, and I know that it, it will be popular and unpopular, and the enforcement's going to be difficult of how we maintain that, especially because, uh, there may be some neighboring communities who make different decisions through this process. So, um, as far as the playgrounds, uh, as far as my understanding goes, we will have signage prepared, and once we transition to yellow, we'll then permit that with appropriate signage, uh, excluding the skate park. Am I correct?
We should also-
Well, you're making your decisions. This board isn't voting.
Thanks.
Will you also check in to see what the district is doing?
Uh, the district of Southeastern Pennsylvania?
No, 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 the school district-
The school.
Oh.
The Shamet.
They're, I, I will.
Because that could, that could just get confusing for the public of what playground is open and what is not, whether it's-
It already is, but I will absolutely check in with Tim Trigg from the Shamet School.
Okay.
Thanks, Matt. Do you have something about Love Grows or something?
Thank, okay, moving on to my next, moving on to my next subject. I'm trying to go through all these things quick. Uh, the, um, the Love Grows has been doing very well. The ground is producing beautiful and delicious. Uh, they are requesting to host farms at Playwicky Farm on Sunday through the duration of the summer into the, uh, between ten AM and one PM. Uh, they've already obtained a solicitation permit through the zoning office. Somebody, somebody there?
Go ahead, uh, uh, go ahead, Matt.
Okay, sorry. Um, uh, the Love Grows has already obtained a solicitation permit, uh, through the zoning office, uh, and paid their fee and approved. Uh, they are more than adequately prepared to follow the guidelines. Uh, they're currently participating in three other farmers markets. I believe it's Wrightstown, Bristol, and Newtown. So they're, they're well-versed on the guidelines and any safety that needs to be implemented. Um, and, uh, with your permission, I don't know if we want to put it in the manager's report, or if the board can take action. I know we're at workshop, but, uh, we would like your, uh, approval for hosting a farm stand. It, it's not a farmer's market. There are not multiple vendors, there's just one vendor, uh, and that would take place, uh, in Playwicky Farm on Sunday between ten AM and one PM, and following all guidelines set forth by the Bucks County Department of Health.
When's the, when's the projected start date, Mark, Matt?
They're ready to go as soon as this Sunday, but they're understanding of the current conditions.
Where would they be setting up, Matt?
So at the bottom of the parking lot, uh, where it goes into the cul-de-sac, it would be on the left-hand side where we, at one time, hosted a farmer's market.
Okay.
So, they're not going to have any more, they can't have any more than twenty-five people, correct?
That's a number open to interpretation, Deb.
Well, no, the yellow zone is twenty-five people, so-
But, but do you count it as twenty-five people in the park, or twenty-five people who are shopping at their, their farm stand?
I'm, I guess at the, at the market.
I don't anticipate them to have a line of twenty-five people bound.
I just want to make sure that we're following the guidelines, that's all.
Understood. I wouldn't have presented this if I didn't think that they could adhere to those guidelines.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't have any, uh, any problem myself, uh, following Matt's, you know, recommendation.
Is that something we need to make a motion on, Frank?
Well, it, it, either you allow Matt to make the decisions, or you make the decisions. If you, I mean-
I'm, I'm fine with Matt making that decision.
Same here.
I agree.
Same here.
So should we put it in the manager's report or no?
Uh-
Yeah, sure.
That's fine, and, and they also pulled their, uh, solicitation permit also, Matt mentioned too. That's fine. And and they also pulled their uh, solicitation permit also Matt mentioned too.
Yeah, and and all the certificates of insurance and everything has already been on file. Uh, and one note is uh, obviously nutrition and vegetables are healthy and it's also safer than a grocery.
All right.
I think we're in the right direction on this one.
Thank you, Matt. Do we want to, do we want to start?
I got um.
We we gotta start the meeting.
Here we're eleven minutes over.
Can you give me two minutes on pools and camps? I'll run through it real quick.
Clock's running.
Okay, go. Um, pools and camps. Everybody, uh, okay, I shouldn't start with everybody. There is a large majority of residents who would like to see the summer camp program run under the conditions of green. Uh, also taking that consideration of the pool operation, they would like to see it run under green. I think that I can do it safely. And there's uh, one thing that is is constantly weighing on my mind, obviously, safety. Um, not only safety for our campers, safety for our patrons at the pool, but safety for the staff, not only while they're there, but while they return home and back into our community. The guidelines are vague. I'm not saying that they're open to interpretation, but the Bucks County Department of Health is requesting that we prepare a plan that we submit to the Department of Health to be reviewed and executed according to those standard operating procedures that I would set forth. I think that we can execute it safely.
Well, there are. There are guidelines on this.
I mean, you could read them. I could read them. Frank can read them. We're all gonna come up with three different things.
But Matt, you said under green. You didn't say under yellow.
Under green, yes. This this whole conversation is uh, contingent upon green. Under yellow, we would not be able to operate. Uh, it was too restrictive.
Let me ask you. Have something ready for when it does go to green then?
It would be uh, an anticipated move. It it's not like the day that we would go to green, we would automatically open. Uh, assuming that the governor's office would give us some kind of lag time to say uh, as they did with the transition from red to yellow. They would also give us that same lead time to let us know that we're gonna go from yellow to green. Uh, that would be our prep time essentially. And I I I think it's something that we could execute and do it safely, yes.
Well, Matt, is is there a date? I mean, the earliest looking at what there is there right now, the earliest that we could possibly go to green looks to be either June nineteenth or June twentieth. I mean, and that's if all goes well. Is there a date, July first, July tenth, where it's maybe not worth doing it or it's not cost effective where, you know, it's like a drop dead date that if we don't get there by such and such a date, then we abandon this idea?
There is a drop dead date. Um, I I've been using for planning sake, um, July seventh. Uh, it's the Monday following the Fourth of July weekend. Um, it it's it would give us a partial summer, but the next thing uh, following safety that we would have to understand is that it this this would be um, unbudgeted. The the overrunning costs that we're currently gonna experience or that I'm planning for potentially um, are all unbudgeted. We could do it and we can implement all those safety measures and all the guidelines without a problem. Yeah, it's an aquatic facility. Safety is first, first and foremost.
Matt, question for you. You speak of uh, the safety. Are you talking about running at at not full capacity, half capacity, quarter capacity? What exactly do you mean?
We're determining that number. Uh, it's right now, if if I were to read the guidelines, it's a little bit vague. Uh, they refer to it as an active use zone. Um, but the active use zone is not defined. So it would it would absolutely become a a mathematical numbers um, to make sure that not only do we service the residents with that amenity, but that we can do it safely.
Right, I I just I would just like to know in in what capacity are you talking about before we actually make a decision? I would like to see those numbers.
I would I would outline that for you absolutely, Mr. Kutsaradis, before I made a move at all. Um, it's unknown at this time. One last thing, uh. I I know we're coming up on my two minutes quick.
Um, that's coming gone.
There's a there's a perception, okay? Uh, some people will perceive that our guidelines and the way that we execute it and follow it is overkill. There's also a perception that for some reason uh, a an individual might not feel like we're doing enough. So to manage that that public perception, obviously, we want to show that we are uh, being forthright and compliant and above board when it comes to any of the guidelines that we're following through. But the the first staff member who relaxes their mask to take a picture of a wall in ninety degrees and and someone uh, you know, wants to ridicule that staff member in in some way, blast them on on Facebook. It it wouldn't be fair to the policy and steps that we impact. And again, there's the reverse side. There's the folks who think that they're we're doing too much, that we're being too restrictive. We're we're imposing on people's uh, freedoms and rights to use public amenities that have a fee incurred and therefore they can use it.
Well, then, the and the last question I have, Matt, before we go is, do we need to make a distinction? If if the camp and the pools are open, are they only open for the summer campers? Does the public have a way to come in and use dolphin on the weekends and so forth? Or are you just opening up and paying a pool company to maintain the pool for what could be twenty-five or fifty summer campers?
Ultimately, here's what we're looking at, Ray. Uh, if I can maximize the summer camp program between Monday through Friday and then use that same number, that same ratio of people per square foot and and area of pool and then apply that on the weekends, uh, we would essentially apply that same calculation to the public that we do with camp. They would just separate it. Again, that's only one idea of a hundred.
Right.
And how do you, how do you accept the people if you had, before this all happened, a hundred people that wanted kids to come to the camp and now you would take fifty? How do you determine which fifty it is?
Fifty's a really low number. I'll tell you right now, we couldn't operate with fifty. I'm shooting. I know, I know.
Um, we're limiting, how are we limiting that first come, first served?
That would have to be a a policy decision that we would review, uh, and it would it's something we never done before. I don't have an answer specifically, Silva. We would try to be as fair and even as possible.
Matt, in the interest of time, it's ten of eight. I wouldn't have any problem, and I'm not speaking for the board, just for me, Ray Weldon. I wouldn't have a problem with you starting to formulate a plan and share it with the board in the so that at least we're semi-ready should we go to green and we can just kick it around and see what we're comfortable with and what revisions we'd like to make and what's what we what we think is good.
That that's great. I really appreciate that, uh, Mr. Chair. I just want to make sure that um, you guys are already aware that I'm in constant communication with the Department of Health, uh, the Bucks County Recreation Council, several other pool operators who are in the same position that we are. And everyone is trying to stay optimistic through this time and look at the July months, the August months, even in the Labor Day weekend as we transition through these colored phases.
And I can say a little quick, Matt, you might want one more on the green zone. You might want to look at a percentage of capacity as a formula for happiness.
We're we're definitely taking a percentage number into consideration. Uh, it seems like the Department of Health is leaning towards more of a a square foot calculation just to keep the social distancing.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
We ready to go to the meeting?
You guys very much. Can't wait to go to green.
Yeah, I want to go to a couple of things here, Ray. Can I do that? One, one is the parade and one is if Jeff meeting, uh, who can make a proposal for something also? Can I do that at the public meeting?
Absolutely.
All right. You want to do that now or at the meeting or at the meeting?
At the meeting.
But yeah, let's do it at the meeting because I'm pushing five of eight.
Yep.
I apologize for my overrun on time, Mr. Chair.
That's okay. I that's no problem, no problem. We can just transition into the public meeting then, right, Joe?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, this is Ray Weldy of the Lower Southampton Township Board of Supervisors. Welcome to the public portion of the Lower Southampton Township Board of Supervisors meeting um, for Wednesday, May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty. The meeting's being held via teleconference. Um, it was advertised duly as required um, to start the meeting. Would everyone please re- rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before the meeting tonight, uh, the board met at six PM in executive session. Executive session ran approximately from six to seven PM. Um, the executive session, we discussed many personnel issues. Um, we also discussed uh, some financial issues as it relates to township personnel and the amount of uh, employees working in the workforce and some decisions that we have to make regarding that. We spoke about some department head positions and uh, we also so spoke about an item on the agenda, item number three, that's going to be brought up in the meeting itself. Um, after the executive session at approximately seven PM, uh, the board participated in a public work session. During the work session, the board uh, first uh, received an update from the fire marshal um, who wasn't present. We received it from the township manager. And the fire marshal gave us an update on the amount of calls that he had responded to over the past two weeks, approximately fifteen calls for various calls of service. The fire marshal thanked the Chin Maya Mission, which is located um, on Bridgetown Pike, just below the intersection of West Maple Avenue. Um, the generous people from the Chin Maya Mission donated one thousand dollars to be uh, donated to the local food bank. Those donations were made to the local food banks. And the fire marshal also advised us that four bins of food have been collected as part of the fire marshal's food collection donation program um, with the bins that are located outside of the old district court building. Those four bins of food were just donated to Saint Stephen's Food Bank. The next four bins of food that are collected will go to the Assumption BVM Food Bank. Uh, the next item that came up in the work session um, was we received an update from the Public Works Director. Public Works Director advised us that the lower end of the police lot is being refurbished as far as sidewalks and paving go um, due to some long-term water problems. That work should be done by the end of this week. We also received a update from the Public Works Director on a finalized list of streets to be paved. Um, hopefully, starting this July, um, that street list was put out for bid via pen bid. Um, and after we received the bids, uh, we'll give the township residents a further update. We also spoke to the Parks and Recreation Director um, with a conversation about playgrounds opening. Um, there was some mixed messages over playgrounds opening at the county level and at the local level. Um, and that the CDC recommends playgrounds opening when uh, the area returns to what's called the green phase. So we left that call up to the Public Works Director, but for now, since we're still in the red phase, the playgrounds aren't open as of uh, right now. We also, Public Parks and Work Recreation Director gave us a um, proposal from Love Grows. Um, Love Grows is a food cooperative that is um, renting or leasing a portion of the farm to grow crops and um, raise chickens and and eggs and things of that nature. Um, Love Grows has made a proposal to run a farmer's market on Sundays from ten AM to one PM um, at Play Wiki Farm. The farmer's market would be located at the lower parking lot of Play Wiki Farm by the cul-de-sac. Um, Love Grows has applied for the proper solicitation permit. And um, as long as everything goes as requested, they were looking to be in operation either this Sunday, May thirty-first or the following Sunday, June seventh. And last but not least, um, we spoke about the summer camps. Um, there's been a large amount, an overwhelming amount of requests from township residents to open up the summer camps if we can, when we get to the proper, when we get the proper go-ahead and with the proper guidelines. Um, so we spoke about that and spoke about what possibly we could do if and when we go to the green phase and the uh, the plans that we would make to open up the summer camps. We asked the Public Works Director to devise a plan um, and run it by the board and the township manager and possibly present to the county board of health um, in the event that we go to green phase sometime in the in the time period where the parks uh, and the summer camps could be open. And that's a a summation of the executive session and the work session. Um, next up is public comment, public com- the public was asked um, via Facebook posts and I believe on the township web pa- webpage to submit any uh, questions or comments they would like um, via uh, an email. Um, if there's any comments, I believe Ms. Lynn or Mr. Gatto, could you share them with us now?
Sure. There there was uh, one comment. Uh, Ray, before we go, um, you mentioned the Public Works Director was actually the Recreation Director, so I wanted to be clear on that. It wasn't uh, Mark. It was Matt Gilbert, the Recreation Director, making those decisions. Um.
No, the Public Works Director was just about, I'm sorry. I I meant that about the paving and the uh.
I know what you meant. I just want to, just for the record. Um, we got a comment from Cindy Bowman on Herrick Avenue, uh, who's also with the Feast of Gold Fire Company. Uh, she, her question was, when is the Board of Supervisors planning to hire a permanent fire marshal or public safety coordinator slash emergency management coordinator? Some some applicants have have inquired, I guess, through her. That was one of the questions.
Um, and that's actually a great question because we discussed that um, in the last two um, sessions that we had prior to the last two meetings, the meeting of uh, May thirteenth and tonight's meeting. Um, we interviewed three applicants back on, I believe, March eleventh. The other three applicants have been in limbo um, based on the situation that we're in with the uh, coronavirus pandemic. Um, and the board has decided, and we discussed it tonight, the board has decided to contact um, all of the applicants and let them know that we've tempor- we've suspended um, interviews and uh, going over the applications until we have a clear situation of where the township's going and when this pandemic and the restrictions that that come with it will be lifted. We're not in the position to conduct those interviews right now. We're to name a fire marshal, so um, we intend to do that as soon as possible, but under the current conditions, we had to suspend that.
That was the, that was the only comment for tonight.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
No problem.
Okay, first up on the uh, agenda, item number one is the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes item one A, approval of the minutes from the May thirteenth, two thousand twenty public meeting. Item one B, approval of accounts payable from the May twenty-seventh or for May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty, excuse me, and item one C, approval of certain recurring monthly bills, May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty. Is there a motion to um, approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Mister, but motion made by Mr. Shannon and a second by Mrs. Cummings. Okay, there's a motion made by Mr. Shannon to approve the consent agenda, seconded by Ms. Cummings. Um, we'll go down and do a roll call vote in alphabetical order as we've been doing over the past few meetings. Uh, Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaradas?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. And this is Ray Weldy. I vote yes. Motion passes with a vote of five to zero. Thank you. And this is Ray Weldy. I vote yes. Motion passes with a vote of five to zero. Um, next up on the agenda, the item two subdivision and development for Lucas Osabka. I hope I said that correctly. Property owner of 435 County Line Road, Huntington Valley, Pennsylvania. Tax parcel number 21-001-006. Um, I'll turn this over to Mister Gatto and possibly Mister Bartlett at this time.
Well, well, first of all, I think it's your general practice to open the hearing, make a motion, open the hearing.
Okay. Um, then we would need a motion to open up this, uh, hearing for item two on the agenda. Is there a motion to do that?
Some move, Mister Kutsaratus.
Mister Karatus, Mister Kutsaratus has made a motion, a second?
Second.
Okay. Ed Shannon.
Thank you. Thank you, Mister Shannon, seconded by Mister Shannon. Um, roll call vote, Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Mister Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you, Mister Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. And this is Ray Weldy. I vote yes. So the motion to open the hearing, um, passes with a vote of five to zero.
I believe there's someone here to represent the applicant on this matter.
Um, that's correct. Uh, this is Mark Windauer speaking. Uh, I represent, uh, I'm the attorney for Lucas Osabka. And also with us, we have the surveyor that prepared the plan, Mikhail Zadyazkin. And, um, if the, if the board would like, I can give a quick rundown of, uh, the plan and the waivers we are requesting tonight.
Mark, could you just give a brief history that you've already been to the zoning hearing board and the planning commission?
Certainly. So, uh, with regards to the zoning hearing board, the width of the proposed lots is slightly, uh, smaller than what the zoning, uh, requirement is. I believe it's actually seven feet smaller. The zoning hearing board did approve a variance on that. And then the, uh, the plan was submitted to the planning commission, uh, which approved our request there and, uh, submitted it, approved it to pass on to the Board of Supervisors tonight.
Uh, you, you say that, but I was asked by Ms. Kaplan, one of the supervisors. She indicated, uh, that, uh, Jeff Bartlett had a comment about the sidewalks. Jeff? Uh, did you have a comment about not waving the sidewalks? Is that the question, Deb?
That is. According to the minutes from the, uh, planning commission, um, Jeff, you had said that you considered preparing the sidewalk issue to a future time in place of a waiver, saying that by granting a waiver on sidewalks now, that necessarily at the future date, that the township itself could be held responsible for the cost.
So that being said, I talked to Mister Bartlett today, and he did, we did, that was not part of our discussion, so I think we need him to comment. Jeff, are you there?
Jeff, if you're online, please unmute yourself.
Well, I'm not hearing from Mark, so why don't you gi- give us your presentation and if he, if he comes in, we'll hear what he has to say.
Okay. Thank you. So, um, what their request is, it's, uh, currently, the applicant owns one piece of property. It is, uh, currently roughly 2.34 acres. Uh, the request is to divide that into two lots. One, uh, the applicant will remain the owner and he has a house there, everything. That will all remain the same. It is the other, other portion, uh, the balance, roughly 2.6 acres, um, will be formed into a new lot two. And, uh, I believe you may have had a chance to review the plans. Um, the, so I guess on the sidewalk issue, um, if you look in that area, uh, the reason that the waiver was being requested, there, on that side of the street, there are not, um, any sidewalks installed at the moment. So we were hoping to avoid a scenario where we sort of had this, um, you know, 200 stretch, uh, 200-foot stretch of sidewalk that was just kind of floating there on its own. So our hope was, uh, to have a waiver for that. Um, the, there were two other waivers we were requesting. Uh, one, uh, relates to additional widths of, uh, additional detail on the plan, such as widths of the street, property lines, um, and names of owners. All of that is there. It just, uh, may not be to the level of detail that the board normally requests. The reason, um, it isn't there is just because there's already so much information, uh, on the plan that everything can be easily identified. Yeah, you don't need that additional information that may be needed on some of these larger plans, um, that are, that are requested. Um, so that was, uh, request for a waiver on the sidewalk and request for a waiver on the level of detail on the plan. Uh, the final request, these lots already have a, uh, a decent amount of vegetation and trees on them. So, uh, the the code does require that a tree be planted every 40 lineal feet of street frontage. Uh, we're looking for a, uh, waiver on that to say, look, the trees on there, um, as they stand today, are sufficient. There was one additional tree planted already, um, to, you know, kind of build up the front, the front part of the lot where it is next to the road. So, uh, so that was a request as well. I'm certainly happy to go into any further detail on those.
I thought the,
How many trees are there? Is there one every 40 feet? With the, what, what's existing?
Uh, let me see. So there are, and there's been some back and forth on this. So, um, the if we can speak with Jeff, he may be able to weigh in a little bit more if he is here. There was looking at that, every 40 feet, I believe it's roughly.
Any more trees in?
He's online, so.
Jeff, are you there? Jeff?
I'm trying to call him.
Okay.
I just spoke to him over the phone, so if he could unmute himself with the star six, he would be able to begin. Jeff?
Yes.
No.
No, Jeff.
Sorry.
I mean, why would they be against putting a tree in ever every 40 feet?
Well, I, I think the decision, what I read from the planning commission is that they thought that Lot 1, and there's a picture somewhere in your packet, was sufficiently wooded. I thought they also asked for an additional three trees on
They did.
Proposed Lot, Lot 2.
Right.
I ha- I don't know why they came up with those numbers, but that's, that's what the information that was provided.
Do they three to four, they asked us three to four trees on County Line?
Okay.
I have a question for, for you, sir, about the sidewalks.
Certainly.
I mean, the, the way I read the, um, the S Aldo review is that the S Aldo called for sidewalks not only on the frontage streets, but also on any streets that would, um, kind of, uh, hold on. Sidewalks shall be constructed on one side of all frontage streets and both sides of all other streets within the subdivision or land development. Now, they had asked for a waiver for the sidewalks on the side streets within the subdivision or land development, but that the plans should be revised to include sidewalks along the frontage of County Line Road. Is that correct?
That, that, that's what the requirement is unless you grant a waiver. Mark, what's, what, what streets are this property on?
Well, it's right up around County Line and Douglas somewhere, isn't it? Maybe a little below.
No, no, it's right, right on County Line Road.
But it's
County Line Road.
Right, but it's up past Pine Road, right?
It's between Pine and Buck Road.
Right.
So that's what I wanted to hear from Jeff. Um, but Jeff's input from the management is in with his input about not granting that waiver.
Well, I'm gonna call him.
Jeff, you there? Jeff, he is online.
Well, he's
Jeff? Star six, and you will be unmuted.
The bo- the bottom left of the screen.
No, he's dialing it in, that's why.
Can, uh, whoever's in control of the meeting, can you unmute him by chance? I'm not sure if you can do that.
You can't. You can't. I could mute the person, but you can't unmute them.
Jeff, I have you on the speakerphone.
Okay, well, I guess I just cursed over the air, but I'm tired of trying to unmute this.
Well, can, can the, can you?
I heard that the state stated, um, there, the only sidewalks would be along County Line Road. There are no other side streets. And my earlier discussion at the planning level would be that instead of a waiver of the sidewalks, that we grant a deferral. That way, in the event we ever need to put sidewalks in along that area, the property owner would be responsible for helping pay for it and install the sidewalks. Looking at that location, it's very doubtful that you would ever need to, um, put sidewalks in there. This is only a two lot subdivision.
So, uh, Jeff, you and I talked about, I'm sorry. I'm gonna
Mister Dillon, you have to unmute yourself?
Okay, I'm speaking to Jeff. I'm gonna put him on when he speaks because it was too much feedback. Jeff, I prepared a proposed resolution. You reviewed that and, uh, and his answer was yes. On the week, I prepared it and put in a waiver for sidewalks. You're suggesting that a waiver not be granted, that it be deferred, that a decision on that be deferred to a future to- time. Is that what you're suggesting?
Yes, that's because, that is something I discussed when I was at the planning commission level, that rather than granting waivers on sidewalks all the time, it would make sense to, um, do a deferral for a future time down the road, in the event sidewalks were needed. In this particular case, if, if it's left as a waiver, um, I don't think there will be a problem because in all likelihood, no sidewalk is ever going to be installed along that section of County Line Road.
So, are you? Is there a statute on that, Frank? Like a statute of limitations, let's say, where it's five years or 10 years, or is this perpetual?
Well, if you grant a waiver, it's
Not a waiver, but a deferral. Like, let's say we granted a deferral and in 20 years, they're gonna put sidewalks there. Do we go back after Mister Abso- Osabka for those sidewalks then?
Well, I think we would make, we would say he's not granted a waiver. In the event, in the event in the future it's determined that sidewalks are needed, they will install them.
And now, how about if, how about if the property is sold before that time? And the, uh, the new owner would be
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying, the, the
This would, this would be, Mark, I'm sure Mark would agree that this would be a note on the plan. So any future owner would be on notice of this condition.
Okay.
You agree that, Mister Weber?
Yeah, I think that would be a, um, a good solution. Any future owner would be required to install that sidewalk, um, if that, if it came to that. I, I would
Or you It's not any future owner, it's your, any, or what, any owner.
Present or future.
Yeah, I'm gonna get a pencil and write this. Continue.
So with, um, with those requests, were there any other, uh, additional questions I can help answer for the board?
Is that, with this, the subdivision, uh, I, I think, and I didn't open up the, I opened up, I didn't open up the plans right now, but when I looked at it yesterday, it looked like Mister Osabka's, the property he's holding on to is smaller than the property that it's be, the, the other portion. It, is that intended to be, uh, a residential pro- an R1, it's staying R1 and be some type of residence in the future?
That's correct. It would continue to be, uh, zoned R1 and the the purchaser could construct a, uh, a residence there, correct.
And they would be able to get to that property via driveway off of County Line Road? There wouldn't be a separate road that would have to be constructed, or is there an easement?
So both, uh, both lots actually, uh, are adjacent to County Line Road, so there wouldn't, uh, everyone would have access to County Line Road easily.
Yeah, right. Ray, just, just for your knowledge too, on, on the Tri-State Engineers Report underneath General Information, it does specify all that too, that it would be a single, the new construction would be a single family dwelling and, uh, the driveways would both be on County Line.
Yeah. Sounds good.
Um, Frank, can you ask Jeff about the, the waiver of the, the trees, the vegetation?
Uh, Jeff, the other question they're asking about is the waiver of the trees. Uh, what, what was your recommendation?
Um, the, the recommendation goes along with the, uh, the, the fact that they would be planting additional trees on Lot 2. Uh, the Lot 1 already has existing trees. It's, uh, some, semi-wooded along there. And having the, the three trees along Lot 2 would be satisfactory because Lot 1 is already covered.
So is the waiver
It was three trees, not four trees?
That's correct.
That would be a total of four trees, right?
Is it a total of four trees or three new trees? He said, again, he said three.
Okay. But I, I see on the minutes here that, uh, Mr. Asa, but I, I can't pronounce his name, I apologize. Mr. Asa, who Mr. Robner agreed to increase the trees along County Line Road to four. Now, I'm not sure.
Correct. So perhaps, um, I guess, let me, let me, I guess, clean up what I, my earlier statement. So a waiver on Lot 1 from any, uh, ins- from planting of any new trees, Lot 2. Uh, then Lot 2, there's already one tree that's been planted there, which I think is where the three, um, comes from.
So you're gonna plant three more?
That's correct. And I, and I would actually, uh, Lucas, can you confirm that it is three more, or was?
Uh, well, well, we, we supposed to have three more trees, uh, at the Board of Commission. We were told to plant additional Fort One. So of the total of four, four trees.
Thank you.
So.
Okay. So uh, Jeff?
Yes.
Was there a recommend, though, Luke?
A waiver not be granted, but a deferral be granted, whi- which would require any, if required by the township, that they be put, sidewalks be put in the future. Is that the right word?
No tree out the frontage, that's why. We need to plant four trees.
Okay. Um, so I prepared the draft resolution, which I sent to you. Did you have a chance to re- review that?
Yes.
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 Okay, so uh, on number two, I'm changing it to four additional trees. And number three, I'm changing to a waiver was requested. Given the surrounding conditions, a waiver was not granted, but a deferral was granted. was granted. If in the future the lower south.
The question, what amount of sidewalk we, we're looking for?
So.
I don't know what you just said.
Yeah, so Lucas, what, um, so it's, they're basically changing it from a, a waiver to a deferral. So in the event sidewalk is ever required to be installed along that section of the road, then the current property owners would be required to install that sidewalk and bear the cost of that.
Yeah, are we talking about this property or any other property? Because this property, property particularly, it's, uh, pretty hard to, uh, um, make a sidewalk there because of the slope. I have a big slope, uh, in front. It's about over seven feet, uh, tall and, uh, it would probably require, uh, uh, retain, retaining wall, uh, throughout the whole length. Uh, that, that would just be costly, uh, that's, that's just wanted to add this.
Uh, it's, it's not just the costly, in the, for the proposed lot one, and the Lucas property was gonna stay. Uh, it's with the sidewalk, it's slow from his driveway. He's not gonna follow the requirements, and he's still gonna have a stomach cherry. His driveway is already very, very steep slope. If we push the sidewalk, his driveway is gonna need change, and the floor is gonna be a lot bigger. It's gonna be very dangerous from his driveway to go to the County Line Road.
Yeah, so given that, I guess, logistically, if you, if, if there was a time when a sidewalk needed to be installed, you'd have to dig down and then build up a retaining wall to support, uh, those properties. So I guess that, that's part of the reason the waiver was requested, because the, um, feasibility of it would just be very difficult.
Well, the zoning officer, um, his opinion, what it's hot, was it's highly unlikely that a sidewalk will ever be required there. Wasn't that right, Frank?
Yes, that is exa, that's what you said, Jeff, isn't that correct?
Be required. It was, it was something I discussed with the planning commission for any project that they were reviewing and putting forward, that instead of, uh, offering waivers on sidewalks, that we started looking a little closer at the concept of deferral, because there will be times that eventually certain areas will require sidewalks. Maybe not now, when there's only a two-lot subdivision, but then if there's another two-lot subdivision and another one down the road, eventually you're gonna have an area that's gonna need sidewalks, because people are gonna demand, why aren't the sidewalks along my street here? My kids need to walk somewhere. And by putting a deferral in there, it takes the financial burden off of the township. Uh, typically, when it's deferred down the road, the township and the property owners would come to a negotiated amount and say, oh, you pay proportion, we'll pay proportion, and then to put a sidewalk in. Rather than the township that's saying, okay, the residents want sidewalks, and we're gonna pay 100% for that sidewalk. And that's something I think the township would wanna avoid somewhere down the road.
So the, the answer, the answer is, I, I don't see the support for a waiver. I only see the support for a deferral, but it's highly unlikely that it's ever gonna be required.
Yes, and that will close.
Okay, I just, well, I would just try to add that, uh, I've had, uh, two potential buyers that walked away, uh, because of their requirements and mostly because of that sidewalk, they, they just walked away from the deal. But I, I don't know if that's important or not, but I just, I might have a difficulty, uh, finding a potential buyer with, with more requirements in addition to where it was already, uh, laid, laid out.
Okay, so, I, you're saying you don't wanna agree to the condition, the board's got, gotta make a decision.
Yeah, no, no problem, I mean, uh, it's up to you.
We need to, we need to, uh, protect ourselves in any kind of, uh, future, uh, uh, any kind of future expect. Even if it's unlikely it's gonna happen, then it's unlikely. But we wanna make sure that we protect ourselves as a township and the cost, even though it's unlikely. Am I making sense? Like, in other words, it's gonna be something that we're gonna do more than likely moving forward.
No problem.
In my opinion.
Okay, Mo, Mark, what do you have to say?
Um, I, I understand the, you know, the board's concern and position. Um, I think when you see the property, you see their safety concerns. I mean, I guess that would go towards there never being a sidewalk requested for that area. Obviously though, as, you know, as, uh, the property owner, you can see where the concern would come from if, uh, a few years down the road from now, if he isn't required to install a sidewalk right now. So by subdividing, he's now, you know, gaining more requirements that could ultimately, you know, be costly, given the layout of the property and everything, um, as it sits today. So, um, I, I would just, uh, request again, you know, given the, the difficulty to install that sidewalk and if it is installed, probably the safety concerns, um, surrounding it, you would either have to be elevated or reduce it, it could be difficult. Um, you know, we, for this one, I think the waiver would be appropriate. I certainly understand the, uh, the deferral portion that, though, you know, why that would be good in some circumstances, because there are certainly, you know, we've all seen developments where, um, you know, the sidewalks aren't there, so.
Well, I know just, isn't Tonner, isn't Tonner Homes building a 16, uh, townhome unit? Housing facility just down the street from that?
That's correct.
So that area is under some, a, a little bit of development, so, you know, the, the township has to, like Mr. Bartlett suggested, the township has to worry about our, our end of it financially too.
Oh, well. No, I. Well. Here's where we're at. Now, the board needs the vote, there's a proposed resolution, which has been changed, not granting you the waiver. If you want us to vote on that, we will vote on that.
Sure.
Or, yeah. The, the, then, the, okay, what else do you have further to, to offer? I'm not saying you should.
Yeah, I, I think those were the main requests and discussions, uh, we had for this.
So, uh, somebody's gonna ma, make a motion to close this hearing. Then someone's going to make a motion to, uh, to, uh, not approve, potentially not approve this subdivision and grant, and not grant the waivers, or, and not grant the waivers requested.
As it's worded right now.
Correct.
Okay. Is there any more discussion before we would make a motion to close this hearing?
Well, well, Mark, might you want?
Hello, this is Carl Turner.
Yes, Carl.
Oh, you can hear me. I've been trying to get on this thing since six o'clock. And they didn't kick me in till seven.
Look, Carl.
But with the, with the roads, um, what happens is, in the future, even though it looks steep there, if they, if the town decided to do the roads, um, all of that would be smoothed out, so that isn't really a, a concern. With the side.
So the elevation, the elevation argument, it's isn't a concern?
Uh, I'm sorry, what did, what did Carl just say?
Co, Carl said in the event that there, the road was be done, this, the layout will be changed, and their argument regarding elevation doesn't hold water.
Well, I guess, how would that work? So it would, to reduce that elevation issue, you'd actually have to cut into the applicant's yard significantly to level it out. I mean, you'd have to start from the house, come to the road to level it out.
Because you can't have the sidewalk on a pop, a private property. The road, sidewalk, and the curb would all meld together.
And then, wouldn't you then need, since there's that elevation, wouldn't the, someone need to construct a retaining wall for the applicant's property?
It's not deep enough for a retaining wall.
Repeat that, Carl?
Not deep enough, it's not, it's not sloped enough that you would need a retaining wall. And I think, I mean, because it's not, if, if they were asking, if they were, if they were asking for it to be done today, you'd have a problem because of where you ended the sidewalk. You could make it work in the street, but you'd have a problem at the end. So by foregoing it to the future, um, when they do that, they'll probably put sidewalk all along that from one corner to the other corner, in which case everything would meld in.
So you're saying there would be a problem?
Yeah, I guess respectfully, I don't understand how there wouldn't need to be a retaining wall there, because you're cutting into that bank and it's, um, I mean, it's a steep, it's a steep drop-off.
Uh, exit driveway, so I didn't stop.
I'm looking at, yeah.
If anything you wanna add to this?
Well, here, let me, let me try to grab a screen grab of it and I'll, uh, share it. Maybe we can all look at it a little bit better then.
So, do we turn down the whole subdivision or sub, or grant the subdivision and grant two of the waivers? Frank, be yourself. Yeah. Okay, I'm sorry. Well, before, while we're wasting, while we're all sitting here, are any of the board members in favor of granting the waiver of the sidewalks?
I would be, I would be in favor of the deferral, they, you know, based on Jeff's recommendation.
That's where I'm at, with the deferral, with the changing of the word, not the waiver, completely, no. I'm not in favor of that.
Can I hear the other?
Hence, I was asking the question from the very beginning, I wanted to bring that up.
And in light of Carl's comments about if the road is changed in any way, that slope doesn't, becomes insignificant, and the sidewalks wouldn't, you know, wouldn't be part of Mr. Osaba's property if we go out to the curb.
Right, and you're gonna, um, your road is probably gonna be due to a road widening anyway, so all of that'll level out.
Yeah, and respectfully, I mean, if you look at, so I just share that, that's the mailbox right there. So you can see that there is a slope. I just don't see how a retaining wall would not be required if you wide, if you widen the road. I mean, that appears.
Well, you, you, I assume you have an engineer here, we do, so it's not up to us. The engineers gotta discuss this.
Yeah, I just wanted the, the board to be aware of what that slope actually looked like, so you could see with this mailbox, you know, as a, as a general gauge as to what the, it would be. You'd have to actually cut into the applicant's bank, back to his yard and, and slope it, I, so it would, you know, it would affect it.
No, because your ultimate right of way is at your property line. You've got the ultimate right of way there.
So. But doesn't.
If you were, if you were saying that it was going.
Into this mulched area, right?
Into what?
So I would, I would refer to this area as a, um, you know, where mulch used to be. The sidewalk would expand over into this area, correct?
I can't see what your, where your, I can't see your picture, so.
No. Um, so, are you just, I guess, you just called in that. Uh, so if you look at on Google Maps, you can see the mailbox. Uh, the height of the mailbox is actually below the height of the yard behind it. So my concern is, if you expand and widen the road to include a sidewalk, and you install a sidewalk over there, the bank loses all adjacent support from that ground you're pulling away, and it would require a retaining wall. Now, I mean, I.
So, so Mark, I have a lawyer arguing with an engineer, and the, and the engineer, and the engineer's disagreeing with you. So where are we, where are we going with this conversation?
That it would not require a retaining wall, that it would be ample, that there would be enough room for it to just slant down. And I'm saying respectfully, I don't see how that's possible, given it.
From the ultimate right of way to across the street, that road goes up and down. If they were gonna put sidewalk in, it would come with a road widening, which would be a change in elevation of the road.
Yeah, but our, yeah, ultimate right of way goes by, by the driveway. And we have to create the existing driveway to be bigger angle than it's now. It, the existing driveway is already very dangerous to drive. If we, if we create a ramp, the driveway will have a bigger angle again.
And, and I'm not necessarily trying to argue, I'm just trying to understand the logistics of how it works, you know, I mean, it's, I fully understand, he's an engineer, I'm an attorney, we do a lot of plan and subdivision and, and ground-up development. Uh, I guess.
Roads, roads are, when they, when they're built, they go up and down.
Right, but you, I don't, you'd have to raise the road three, four feet for it to no longer require a retaining wall on the property.
No, it wouldn't be raised three or four, it don't, you don't need three or four feet for that area.
Well then, could we perhaps say that the deferral, um, is in there and the property owner would be required to install a sidewalk unless the, unless there's some degree of difference in elevation, say, you know, unless installing the sidewalk there would result in a three-foot, um, you know, decrease or a, a three-foot retaining wall to be installed.
Okay, can I explain how that normally hap, can I explain how that normally happens?
Yes.
The town would come in and decide that they wanna put sidewalk, um, in the area. And what they'll do is they'll go through and do their surveys, and then they'll come in from whatever point that they start to whatever point that they end. And actually will do the, because they don't want a lot of inconsistency. So that they'll put, they'll do the roads and the curves and the sidewalks and put them in where they're supposed to be. Your, whoever owns that property would have to kick in whatever piece that the, um, a, a part of what is being done.
Mo, Mark, I don't hear any support for your request for, uh, a waiver, and I hear support for the deferral. You could either have a vote tonight, or you can tell, have your engineer talk to our engineer and try and work something out that makes sense. But you're not, I don't see any support for you getting, uh, a waiver this evening, so what do you wanna do?
I, I think the applicant's okay with it, with it going forward. I think there, um, may be a general misunderstanding of what that property is like out there, but, uh, you know, we can certainly go to a vote, and I guess we'll roll the dice and see what happens down the road with, um, future plans.
So if I understand, the motion's gonna be to approve the subdivision, grant two waivers, and deny the third.
I would say amend the third to a deferral, right?
You just said you don't want that.
No, I think, I think he said.
Oh, no, 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 no.
I think he said he was okay with the deferral.
You're okay, yes. Okay.
Chris, that was clear, you're okay with the deferral?
Yes.
Word it, the way we wanna word it.
Well, here, a wait, I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let Jeff hear this. A waiver was requested from the provisions of. of Sallow Section 228091, which states that sidewalks shall be constructed on one side of all fronted streets and on both sides of all other streets within the subdivision or land development. Given the surrounding conditions, a waiver was not granted, but a deferral was granted. If in, if in the future Lower Southampton Township is required by, if in the future, uh, the applicant is required by the township to install sidewalks, uh, the, the, it will be the responsibility of the future owner to do so. A note will be added to the plan, so any future owner will be on notice of such requirement.
Well, present or future?
I'm sorry, Jeff, what?
Present owner or future?
That would be future owner of the second lots.
Any owner of the lot.
Any owner of the lot.
Any owner, right? That's correct.
That would second lots.
Both lots.
Be both?
Both lots.
Both, both lots, okay.
Yeah, both lots.
That will include me.
Yes.
But as Jeff said, the likelihood right now is not great, but the township needs to protect itself.
Okay.
So, uh, Mark, I know you don't like that provision, but are you agreeing to it?
Uh, I'd have to defer to, uh, Lucas, the applicant. Lucas, um, is that, is that acceptable to you? I mean, right, as of right now, logistically, does the municipality have any right to require him to put the bill for installation of a sidewalk? So, I mean, this is going, this is adding a new, um, possibly future obligation to you, Lucas, so I'd have to defer to, to what your thoughts are.
Just a quick question, uh, what, what, uh, amount of sidewalk are we talking about?
It sounds to me like it's a hundred and ninety-three feet.
Okay. Nope. Yeah.
If you are.
What'd you say? I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay, so, and do you have anything further to add?
Uh, nothing from the applicant.
Nope. So, uh, let's make a motion to close the hearing.
Okay.
Now, does the board have any further questions?
I'm good.
Any questions, Sue, Ed, Deb, Kim?
No.
Okay, I think we're good.
So let's have a motion to close the hearing.
Okay, is there a motion to close the hearing for the subdivision land development discussion for, uh, Mr. Osobka's property?
Done, move.
Okay. Mr. Kutsaratus made the motion second?
Second.
Deb Kaplan seconded, um, all in favor, we'll go, we'll call vote, Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you, and Ray Weldy, uh, I vote yes. So the motion passes to close the hearing with a vote of five zero. Um, we would now need a motion. Frank, do you want to explain the wording of this motion to get it correct?
Uh, there's a motion, we prepared a draft resolution. On the second page subsection B, we're changing, uh, granted waivers to items number one and two. And a waiver is not granted from number three. There is only going to be a deferral. Uh, with, that in the event it's required, the sidewalks are required in the future, uh, they will be installed by the property owner. And a note will be added to any plan so that any future property is on notice of this requirement. Other than that, the re, the resolution would be as prepared.
Thank you, Frank. Is there a motion then to, uh, is there a motion to pass, um, the resolution as so described just now by Mr. Dillon?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Shannon, a second?
I'll second that, Susan Cummings.
Seconded by Ms. Cummings, a roll call vote, we'll go down by, uh, alphabetical order, Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you, and Ray Weldy, I vote yes. Uh, motion for the resolution passes, um, has amended with a vote of five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, have a good night.
I'll see you later.
Thank you. Uh, next up on the agenda, item number three. Um, item number three came up in tonight's executive session, um, and based on, uh, further discussion and, um, further work needing to be done on item three. Um, Ray, uh, Ray Weldy, I would make a motion to postpone item three until a later meeting. Um, is there a second to postpone item three on the agenda?
I'll second that, Deb Kaplan.
Thank you, and I should say that the, item three on the agenda is the discussion and review of the proposed Bucks County Intermediate Unit Settlement Agreement and License Agreement. So a motion been made by Ray Weldy, seconded by Ms. Kaplan. We'll do a roll call vote, Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you, and this is Ray Weldy, but, oh, yes, so, um, agenda item number three is postponed until a, a later date. Um, that is all on tonight's agenda, um, as we have it right now. Next up, uh, Mr. Shannon has asked for, uh, a few items to be brought up, uh, in the public meeting, so Mr. Shannon, I'll go to you.
Thank you. Uh, is, uh, Jeff still available or not? Anyway, the, uh, the one thing I wanted to bring up is the parade.
Did you, you say, is Jeff still available? Do you want me to get him again?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Um. There's been a, there's been a request from Undelay, who's a restaurant right near, uh, the cold bar or whatever it's called. And he's asking, Jeff can explain it better than I can. That's why I'm asking if he, if he's available. Um.
Jeff, do you understand the question? Here he is.
Okay, Jeff, could you explain Undelay thing? Yes?
Did, do you hear the question about? What is it?
Undo-
Under that?
Undelay Restaurant, right, where Cold Spring Creamery and Panera Bread is?
Here he is.
The, the property owner, the businessman, a, approached me about having a special event on at the parking lot outside his business. It would be something like a kind of a drive-in, uh, movie situation. Cars would be separated out, there would be some music playing, and people could order food curbside, they would go out to their vehicles. Um, they could listen to the music, but when they were done eating whatever, they would just drive away. Um, uh, some of the proceeds would go to first responders and local charities. Uh, when I spoke with the gentleman, I told him that there is no provision currently in our zoning that would allow me to authorize him to do this. Uh, that it would have to go to the board supervisors for their approval, similar to when the board.
My phone died.
Anyway, anyway, I can, explaining a little bit of it, and well, Jeff coming back. He wants to eat at the parking lot next to his store, next to the cold cream, uh, and, and part of the bowling alley's a parking lot. Says he has approval from the owner of the property, et cetera. And he would put on some live music, either a band or a singer or something. And all the cars would be, uh, some distance away, whatever our requirements would be. And he would donate up to thirty percent of whatever he sells in food. And that would go pretty much whoever we decided it would go to. I mean, that's the thumbnail sketchup, but, uh, uh, and, and Jeff has written back, uh, that's what I wanted to go with. Uh, that this is something that the board has to be approval of. Uh, and is there any interest doing something like that for a property on the, uh, restaurant? He can be, and, uh, I don't know what the requirements may be, but he's willing, uh, just upon any requirement that we put on him to do this.
What time, what time did he, did this want to be, like, what time is that?
He wanted it from three to seven P M.
And. What about the businesses that are there? I mean, what about their parking that are open?
I'm sorry, say it again?
What about the businesses that are open for parking?
Well, this would be on the.
The whole parking lot?
Put on the, this would be on a bowling alley parking lot, that's what his thought is.
Oh, bowling alley parking lot.
Closed, yeah.
I see.
And now the one across the street from him is closed also, right? What's, what's that other one called? By, by itself.
The Pier One?
Pier, Pier One, yeah, that's it. Both of those properties are empty right now.
Well, I don't know if they're, I know they were having a big sale and they closed during COVID nineteen. I don't know if they're, if they're going to be closed in the yellow zone, that I don't know.
When, when does he plan to do this, Ed? Is there a, a date?
Mr. Shannon, can I chime in for just a second?
Sure, yes, you may.
Again, in my interpretation of the guidelines, uh, which apply mostly to parks specifically, um, if you wanted to utilize an area such as a parking lot or a venue that would host an event, a community event, um, the way that I interpret the guidelines, it would be extraordinarily difficult.
Okay.
It, it's just my professional opinion. I just wanted to weigh in for that on two seconds. Thank you.
No, that's, that's fine. I appreciate your input. He asked me to, to.
I, I could relate it to any other community event that we've held, such as, uh, five K runs, um, the, the Second Friday events, anytime that we all gather is, is, we could all stay in our cars, but we're all going to get out of our cars.
Okay. All right, he's asked, he's asked me to bring this over, and I think I have my answer.
That's my two cents.
Okay, that's fine.
Did you, did, did we need Jeff on this? Because we could, somebody else can call Jeff Cody on their phone.
Has information and wrote the return letter saying that the supervisors had to approve this regardless of anything else. And I just wanted Jeff to, uh, read his response, which was pretty much what we're hearing now. And I told the owner that I would bring this, uh, for a board vote if, if it's necessary. I don't think it needs to be a vote, just tell them it can't happen, that's all. The other thing I have is, is the parade. Uh, we need to make a decision on the parade. And, um, but the parade is not a money issue. It's, uh, I've got a lot of feedback that says we need to have the parade, but they're not taking into consideration the things that Matt just, just brought forward also. Um, we, we, we go back to the business system to get the parade moving. Uh, we have plenty of money in the parade account, uh, to have the parade, but that's not really the issue. The issue is that we have time to contact the participants to get the word out to the public, uh, and do those kinds of things, and it's all my fault, so.
And also, also crowd control, you know, like how do we, I don't know, even if we're in the green phase on July fourth, you know, oh, um, thousands and thousands of people come out of that, especially along the school and, and, uh, Woodbine Avenue and down School Lane. You know how packed it is on both sides of the streets and up around Burger King where the judges stand is, I, how, how do we manage this twenty, however many people are allowed to be enclosed in whatever distance it is?
Well, we, we normally print twenty-five hundred copies of the booklet. You've all seen the booklet, I'm sure. So we're anticipating a couple of thousand people on the parade route. Now, that runs from Fourth Street way up to the, to the elementary school.
Yeah.
I understand the issues, uh, I just, I just want to start telling the participants particularly that they are having it or we're not having it, and we need to get, uh, the, uh, business people, if they're interested in donating money for the parade. That's normally how we do. So I've heard both sides, we can have it or not have it, but I think the opponents are having it, uh, way outweighs the, everybody else, but.
I, I think just like your prior discussions, your, your professionals told you that it, it can't work this year.
Yeah, I hear you.
Right.
What if it was formatted a different way? What if, if the parade went through neighborhoods where people were in front of their homes, where people weren't gathered closely together?
Uh, I'm. I'm not sure if we didn't do that. If you give me some idea how to, that neighborhood.
Right.
You're doing it through neighborhoods.
And if we didn't go to one neighborhood, the people that heard would be in another neighborhood, would crowd over to that neighborhood to see the parade. We'd be in the same situation, probably.
Absolutely right.
Yeah.
All right.
We can make it like a three-day event, all through every street in Feasterville.
Yeah.
Are you gonna be the drum major, Kim?
Whatever, whatever it takes, Frank.
And Ed can stay up for three days straight leading a parade.
Ed's probably done that before, right? I'm sure he could do it again.
Yeah.
I think, I got my answers.
It's a shame, Ed, because, you know, it, people would love to get out of their houses and line up and see the flags and the fire companies and the marching people and the, and the, and the, uh, uh, the string bands and everything, you know, it, it really is a shame.
It is disappointing. It is disappointing.
Yeah.
Imagine how many people have said, let's have the parade, you know, that's when people have got to get out of their houses, that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
There's got to be some rationale to it.
Right.
But we can't, we can't get in that right at the moment.
Right.
I'm going to pay for it because my wife wants to have the parade too.
Yeah.
So.
And I know Deb loves marching in ninety-nine degree weather with that cap.
Yeah.
That we had on.
Yeah.
Almost had to carry her last year.
Hey, that's not true.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
All right.
Thank you. Um, next up would be the manager's report. Mr. Gatto?
Sure. Um, just, uh, before I start, the, uh, the one point of clarification I wanted to make with Mark McDonald, the Public Works, uh, uh, new director, the salary I mentioned in the previous board meeting was ninety-seven thousand. It's actually ninety-six thousand, I believe in like four dollars. So it's, we could just say it's ninety-six thousand. Um, as far as the sanitation rebate, they're right now, uh, running through June first. We have issued seven hundred and ninety-five so far. Um, basically, I'd like the board's approval, or I could just extend it to June nineteenth at the, at the close of business. So, uh, I'd like to give, um, we're about short, maybe about a hundred and sixty people from the other year. So I want to give them the opportunity to collect on the sanitation rebate. So I figured if we extended to June nineteenth, I think that's fair enough.
I got no problem with that.
Yeah.
Sounds good, Jeff.
That's it.
All right.
Thank you. And then the, uh, the other issue, again, just a reminder, with the polling place that's located at the township building typically is going to be located at the district court center. Uh, we're still waiting, uh, for items to, to go into district court, the sanitation, or sanitization, let's say, as well as the items for the, uh, the polling. Um, so that should, should be happening shortly. Um, lastly, as far as the U S Census, uh, typically around the time, May twenty-seventh through August fourteenth, uh, census takers could possibly or typically interview homes. census takers could possibly or typically interview homes that have not responded to the 2020 census. Right now, the township is at 74.6 response rate, which is real good. It is slightly lower than, let's say, Northampton, Upper South, and Middletown right now. So we want to push that up a little bit as best we can. The easiest way to do it is via the internet if we can. Our response rate on the internet is 64.8%. So instead of somebody knocking on your door, especially during COVID, the best way to do it maybe right now is either to mail it in, i- if you receive the census, or go on the internet and fill it out, so we get properly represented. Um, let's see, what else? Uh, there was one other thing. I mean, it's often since our last board meeting, basically, in an effort to mitigate or reduce the prospective budget deficit, which could be arranged around 800 to a million, a little over a million dollars. The township made, you know, made some hard decisions with regard to to layoffs. But this amount could fluctuate during the course of the year, depending on our revenue viability and prospective work that could be coming in. So that may fluctuate a little bit. And if needed, we may still have to have further phases or adjustments as we go along with this budget cycle, unfortunately.
Joe, just to be clear, you said the township made some hard decisions. You made them as the manager of the township.
That is correct. That is correct. But so there are some tough decisions that are here, and we have to stay fiscally prudent. And as far as the budget, you know, we're going to get through it and we're going to do the best and hopefully with businesses being allowed to open and if we go to a green phase, you know, the earning of tax and so forth should come back. But we have to see on that part. So it's a little bit touch and go, and we might have some hiccup. We'll try to have a smooth landing as best possible. Um, I I think that's all I have as far as the Matt, did you have anything further on the farm, the the farm stand? Was that a decision that was already taken care of?
No, the board did not vote on that. Matt's doing that in his capacity as-
That's what I wanted to make sure on that.
Hey, guys, just coming back to the meeting.
I was, I was just trying to make a comment on that when we talked about the love grid market. If we could do that after June 5th, not before.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Yeah, that already determined that in the in depth, once we go to yellow.
Okay, thank you.
Matt, I know, I know they're scheduled to do it one day a week. Do they, do they feel that if it was prosperous, that they would want to maybe open up another day during the week or evening? You know, what, after work?
In these conditions, we haven't even had that conversation or the potential of what would that come to fruition? Yeah, they're open to any of those ideas, for sure.
I was just thinking, when people are, you know, coming home from work, then, when people start, you know, going back out and doing a work schedule.
Based on agriculture and things, I I I can't speculate, that's it.
If it comes to that, you know, bring, you know, bring that to us if they request it.
Well, you look like a farmer there, Matt.
Oh, I think they would be in favor of it. If the ground's producing, that's what it is. Sense of a farm stand, so.
Maybe a lot of people that would like to go, you know, purchase things there instead of, you know, going into a grocery store, you know, going to an outside market makes makes a lot, some people feel more comfortable.
Agreed. And one other thing, I just wanted to make an announcement, if if I can. So long as I understand the board's in agreement with holding until the yellow phase on June 5th, until we open playgrounds.
Well, Matthew, Matthew, you you made a recommendation in your professional opinion that it was not, you could not open them. And the boards made it, the board, there was no decision made by the board to override your decision.
Right, we deferred to Matt's opinion.
Yeah.
Thanks. Thank you for that clarification, Frank. They were my two things I needed.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Then just a couple, one other small items. In the commissioner's meeting this morning, allegedly, the the commissioner spoke about the the small grant program, the $6 million that they have at the county level. They said they took in 1,400 applications. They've hired an outsourced provider that would be doing the review of those prospective businesses. And hopefully, they will have some responses in a short time with dollar amounts that that would be awarded under that $6 million grant program that the county's offering. They also mentioned about FEMA, FEMA reimbursements. Typically, usually, it's about a year out before you get those reimbursements. They're hoping that in this given year, that it may be able to come in a little quicker, but they're not 100% certain on that part. And and if there's any shortcomings, things that we may get turned down, let's say, from FEMA, FEMA, you know, that are the gray areas. They're saying with the CARES dollars that they received, I believe it was like either 106 million or 109 million, whatever that dollar amount is, they're going to use that to assist up for townships that these, you know, basically uncovered costs. And it looks like, as far as other towns and what you're opening, it seems a lot of the towns would be opening up as far as the township administration buildings for the June 5th, and vast majority are requiring people to wear masks to enter the building. What we're going to do here is, again, sort of that soft opening. We're going to have, you know, lines set up, keeping six foot apart, requesting that mask be worn if possible, trying to make themselves safe, as well as their respective individuals, employees inside the township. And we're also going to try to set up an appointment scheduler. I did talk to the IT person, the vendor. That'll be on the website, and we tested and, you know, debugged that. So that should be a go-to for people to do appointments if they want to. Lastly, they mentioned poll workers. They're saying if people try to enter with no mask, you would be supplied a provisional ballot, and they would probably instruct the person to wait outside until, I guess, the poll place cleared. They're basically as eyes toward safety. They're saying Dr. Damsker would have a health executive officer or order, let's say, placed at each polling position. So they're saying that each polling place would have this executive order from from a Dr. Damsker. So I just want to give you a heads up on that part. That's all I have for today.
I have a question. Could you repeat something that you said? The 109, with 109 million, I was going to ask about that. The 109 million that the county received, what are they using it for?
There, there, if there's any uncovered FEMA or FEMA-related items, they're very black and white. Things that they will reimburse you, not the gray areas. What they're saying is that if there's anything uncovered or that they're not going to cover, whether it be FEMA or FEMA, they may use those CARES dollars that they receive to fund various townships with items that may be in the so-called gray area. So they're they're trying to offer the townships additional dollars if possible. That's all. That's all they said.
Damsker, Dr. Damsker said that he was going to, with an executive order from Dr. Damsker?
Dr. Damsker, for each polling place, is supposed to have written an executive order that is written up supposedly, and each polling place will have that posted at each polling place. So I guess it's the guidelines of, you know, if you want to come in and vote, here's the guidelines. That's all they said on that.
Hopefully, they post them beforehand, you know, so people aren't surprised when they go to the polls.
Right, that's-
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Joe.
Hey, hey, Joe, I I have an idea. Is there any way we could actually post those guidelines on our channel, so it might give the the residents an opportunity to read them?
If, yeah, if I could get my hands on it before, you know, before they're given out, yeah, absolutely, sure. I should be able to do that.
All right.
Yeah, because we want to paste that on our Facebook page or township webpage.
Yeah, that's-
I'll I'll inquire about that, not a problem.
Yeah, thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem.
Uh, next up would be supervisors' comments. Ms. Cummings?
I wanted to thank Afaria Marshall for putting together the food drive. It sounded like it was, it was, sounded like it was a hit, and sounded like he provided a lot of, a lot of food to, you know, to the churches. So I want to commend him and thank him for that. A friend of mine who is a healthcare professional, she needs a tip every time I talk to her and talk to her about the coronavirus and chat about it. And she tells me all the time, she said, that in the hospitals and things they talk about, that for most people, not to be too overconfident and to have a little bit of fear about the virus. She said it makes everyone be more aware to wear their masks, wash their hands, not to touch their face, and to help us keep us healthy throughout the day. So I thought that was a really good tip. I think about that a lot. And I think that might help, that might help us going forward with a lot of the new openings and going from yet, from red to yellow and red to green. Thank you, and everybody have a good night. And again, thank you for the Hometown Hero banners. I know we missed that for our Memorial Day weekend and our celebration. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Kaplan?
I'm continuing condolences to all the the loved ones who lost um, their loved ones to the COVID-19. And also, I hope everyone had an enjoyable Memorial Day holiday, even though it's not the usual Memorial Day holiday. And I want to also say that it was pretty uplifting seeing the hometown banners being up to honor those people that did serve in the military. And I want to thank, as always, the essential workers, the frontline workers, first responders, and volunteers throughout our community. And as you probably all know, as has been mentioned, June 5th, when our county goes into the yellow zone, so that's, that's good news. A long time waiting for that, but I understand being sacred to Philadelphia takes us a little longer. And thank you to everyone for watching and listening, and to our department heads for being here and weighing in on some of the issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yeah, you know, real quick, you know, something close to my heart, you know, it's definitely the the Hometown Hero banners. Last week, I had a, I had a couple residents reach out to me in regards to them. And I had spoken to our township secretary too, and I just want to let the the public know that, you know, we are still absolutely taking orders for the Hometown Hero banners. So if you guys have any, any loved ones that have served and have passed, and you have any interest, please contact our township secretary here at the township and love to have this spread further and further, you know, someday. I would like to see this run up and down Street Road, not just, not just Bustleton Avenue. And that's about it, folks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Shannon?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to thank Fire Marshal for the food drive. That's great. And the amount they've collected is pretty significant. So that's terrific for him to do that. The polling place, I, I'm at a polling place for election, and I just had a call from man that runs it, and he's going to have some issues that he's afraid of. So, and the parade is in no run. That's probably a good decision, because we just, we really don't have time that would be necessary to get that together. I have a brother in New York who is part of this problem that we're having today, so so far, he's safe. But I worry about him tremendously. And the Veterans Memorial Day, that's a great, great venue for all of us, and you got to thank those guys that gave their lives. And thank you. That's it.
Thanks, Ed. And following up with the banners, I really have to thank Mr. Mark McDonald and and Wayne White from the Road Crew for getting out there and Gale Force wins a week ago yesterday, last Tuesday, 40, 50, 60 mile an hour winds, and Mr. White was up on the truck putting those banners up to make sure they were up for Memorial Day. So thank you, Wayne, and thank you, Mark, for getting that done. And also, if you notice, a banner is one or two poles away. There were a couple poles that were sheared off and wrecked over the winter. So when you get down towards Somerton Springs Pool and then coming back north on Bustleton Pike, all of those banners are one pole either north or south, depending upon which way you're going, different than where they were last year because of the the accidents that they had. And we're close to getting what we need, a minimum order of 10. We either have nine or 10, so it was, you can get, if you, like, like Kim said, get your orders in as soon as possible. So as soon as we get 10, we can get around of 10 more banners and get them up, maybe even by mid-July. And last but not least, please get out and vote. I know it's hard to believe, but next Tuesday, June 2nd is primary election day. If you didn't have a chance to get a mail-in ballot, or your mail-in ballot isn't, isn't there, please come out to a polling place and vote on June 2nd. That's all I have. Thank you.
Ray, and could you mention the amount of the banner for people that would be interested?
The banners are $134, and that covers the banner and the hardware that goes with it.
Thank you.
$134, and that would be a check just made out to Lower Southampton Township. And the administrative secretary, or if you contact me by email, we'll tell you what you need for the banner. But it's not much, $134. Thanks, Deb. If there's no further comment or no further business, we need a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion, Ms. Kaplan.
Ms. Kaplan's made the motion. A second?
Okay.
I'll second that.
Uh, seconded by Ms. Cummings. A roll call vote, Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
I'll get it right this week. Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
And Ray Weldy, yes. Uh, meeting is adjourned. Passed with a vote of 5-0. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for everyone that listened, sent in questions and participated in the meeting. Have a good week.
Good night.
Night.
Good night.